Gentlemen, we're going to get started with our public hearing on the FY20 proposed operating budget and proposed amendments to the FY19 to 24 capital improvements program and the FY20 to 25 public services program and fiscal policy for the following: Montgomery County Government, Montgomery College, Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission, and Montgomery County Public Schools. Council committees will conduct work sessions on the budgets over the next three and a half weeks, beginning on Thursday, April 11th. Full council work sessions will begin in May. The committee's schedule is available on the council's website. For everyone scheduled to testify, please bring copies of your written testimony to the clerk at this time. And also, before you begin your presentation, please state your name clearly for the record. Please make sure also to watch the lights. There will be a yellow light that will come up when you have 30 seconds left, and that will give you enough time to finish your sentence, but not a number of paragraphs. And also, there is a button at the base of the microphone that you can turn on when you're going to speak, and then please turn it on when you are finished as well. So we're going to begin with Group A, and for that we have Seth Morgan, April Marone, Carol Petrucci, Stuart Simon, Julie Reiner, Judith Koenig. Okay, we'll start with Seth Morgan.
Good evening. My name is Seth Morgan. I'm the Chair of the Commission on People with Disabilities, and it is my pleasure to present our priorities. First, pedestrian and bicycle safety. There's much more detail in my written testimony, please refer to that. These are the key points. We are concerned about the safety of pedestrians who have disabilities due to the increase in bicycle lanes, floating bus stops, parking along bike lanes, and two-stage turn queues and bike boxes. We recommend the following: make bike lanes separate and do not mix them with pedestrians and cars. Two, halt current installation of bike lanes and take better consideration of the needs of people with disabilities. Three, carefully examine and avoid some of the previous failures of bike lanes in other jurisdictions. Four, reconsider the decision to paint intersections with paint on the ground of green and gray areas as service animals are colorblind. And five, reconsider if bike lanes and trails should be a priority of this county, especially in the setting in which there are areas where there are no sidewalks and children, and families are required to walk in the roadways to get to school, which to me is a fairly high priority that that is more dangerous for the group. Second, continue monitoring and increase appropriate use of Transportation Services Improvement Fund. The Improvement Fund, as you know, was established because of the entry into our jurisdiction of the transportation network companies such as Uber and Lyft that do not provide wheelchair-accessible vehicles. And it was established to allow sufficient funds to bolster the availability of accessible vehicles. I hope that the county will continue to monitor that and push for use of the funds for the purpose they were designated. Three, support and include $159,000 in this year's budget and $1.2 to $1.5 million over five years of the initiative to improve early screening, diagnosis, and intervention for infants and toddlers with developmental delays. Infants and Toddlers Program reports that pediatricians do not use their services and do not perform the screenings. At this juncture, data shows that the earlier that those children with developmental delays are identified, the more likelihood of impacting on the long-term care of those individuals and their overall function. At this juncture, Prince George's County has engaged in an outreach program with pediatricians. Lastly, and I'll be very quick here, number four, request $69,450 to increase Level One Respite Care from $20 to $22. This is for individuals who do not qualify for other programs to achieve respite care through the Ark of Montgomery. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Morgan. April Marone?
My name is April Marone. The Victim Services Advisory Board dedicates time to identifying the needs of crime victims to ensure that they are being met considering our county's budget. Thank you for allowing us to serve. We believe that the following priorities need immediate attention. Our first priority is resolve housing issues for domestic violence victims and their families. Domestic violence victims are provided temporary shelter at the Betty Ann Cronky Center, which is the only shelter in the county for domestic violence victims fleeing dangerous abusers. Those unable to transition from the center to safe housing conditions are provided temporary hotel housing, which is expensive and inadequate with respect to protection from abusers. Safe housing is a crucial step in providing victims the opportunity to becoming self-sufficient for themselves and their families. The Board recommends that the county identify transitional housing units for survivors with a beginning goal of accommodating 20 individuals, and revisit a previous funding request of $100,000 for specialized domestic violence case management services to include safety planning, employment readiness, education, and other trainings, as well as all necessary services. Our second priority is increased funding for domestic violence offender groups. Trauma Services Abuse Persons Program offers domestic violence offenders groups through a contractor. These groups are ordered by the judicial system to offenders in the county and are mandatory. Most victims want the abuse to stop and not to terminate their relationships. To this end, these groups are valuable. The Board advocates for funding for intensive individual therapy for high-risk offenders, psychiatric medical assessments for medication as appropriate, and additional funding for the contractor to do intake and offer translational services. The Board additionally advocates moving towards the totality of the work being done by the contractor. We believe that a funding request of $115,000 would be required to address this priority. Our third priority is restoration of trauma services staffed to previous levels. There is a need for more victim assistance in sexual assault program and abuse persons programs, trauma services, victim assistance, VAs, to staff the local circuit and district courthouses in Rockville and Silver Spring. Trauma Services VAs are independent of the criminal justice system and are on the front line within our courtrooms. Over the last five years, the victim assistance program has seen significant cuts, thus there are not enough VAs in the courts to meet the needs of victims. In the last Court Watch report, it was reported that 42% of victims did not have a lawyer or a VA at their final protective order. In addition, 37% of petitioners who had a VA were granted final protective orders and received family emergency maintenance, as opposed to 6% of petitioners who were alone. The Board is advocating that the management of staff and resources are done in a way that prioritizes the needs of this program. We believe that a funding request of $196,000 would be required to address this priority. This would restore three full-time Grade 20 victim assistants, including their fringe benefits. Thank you for taking the time to consider this request.
Thank you so much. Ms. Judith Koenig, you can approach the table. Yes, you're on the first panel. Carol Petrucci, please press the button at the base of the microphone.
Hi, my name is Carol Petrucci. I'm testifying on behalf of the Montgomery County Countywide Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. We are volunteer citizens dedicated to advancing recreation and parks programs, opportunities, facilities, and services for all the residents of Montgomery County. I'm here today to talk about County Executive Erech fiscal year 2020 operating budget for the Department of Parks and the Department of Recreation. These departments are essential to the county's priority outcomes of thriving youth and families and a greener county. We feel that there are some areas that the county councils should reconsider in order to provide our county's youth, adults, and seniors with the high-quality, diverse, and accessible program services and facilities that enhance the quality of life for all ages, cultures, and abilities. First, about the Department of Recreation. Our senior programs offer a wide spectrum of services to one of our fastest-growing populations in the county, including transportation, nutrition, fitness, entertainment, classes, and holiday and other special events that reduce isolation and increase community connectedness. It's clear that any cuts to our senior services will affect many of our most vulnerable citizens. We have three reductions in the Recreation Department that would affect senior citizens. There's cuts to operating and personnel for senior services. There's cuts to eliminate a staff person to provide the Senior Olympics, and $65,000 in printing of recreation guides. This will seriously curtail seniors' abilities, seniors who don't use the Internet, from finding out about the services. And we also have cuts to youth events. Keeping young people engaged and connected in a safe place with caring adults and healthy programs has been proven to alleviate juvenile crime, improve mental and physical health outcomes, and improve educational and vocational attainment. These cuts would eliminate things like the spring break basketball tournament, the youth town hall summit, and talent shows and other events. And then there's also cuts to planned lifecycle replacement, which is important to maintain infrastructure. In terms of parks, there has been a $4.4 million reduction in the parks budget. We need $1.7 million reinstated to this program to operate new parks and buildings, and also for program enhancements to ball fields and other activities. Thank you. I appreciate your work. It's hard work, and we sincerely hope you will consider these recommendations.
Thank you. Stuart Simon?
Dear Council, I'm Stuart Simon. Dear Council President and members of the Council, it disturbs me to have to say that due to the neglect of your colleagues and fellow legislators, you are now faced with a danger graver than any you or your constituents have ever faced. I am here as the Chair of the Adachalome Climate Action Working Group and the Advocacy Coordinator for the Montgomery County Faith Alliance for Climate Solutions. I have met with most of you personally as part of my organization's visits to your offices, and I've been impressed with your depth of knowledge and sincerity in trying to meet the considerable needs of our county. As part of this budget process, you are hearing and will continue to hear from hundreds of people in organizations with immediate and pressing needs. That's what makes grappling with climate change issues so difficult. Unlike almost all the other issues you're dealing with, you cannot easily see or feel the problem, and even when climate change has begun impacting us, it feels manageable. The latest scientific reports on climate change from the U.S. government has told us that unless we drastically change our behavior, within the next 10 years, a tidal wave of climate change-related changes will inundate coastal areas, cause crops to ultimately be flooded, flooded out or shriveled in the heat, turn forests into giant firestorms. We've seen some of this already, and this is just the very, very beginning, with producing tens of millions of climate refugees and likely eventually destroying human civilization. This is not, it sounds hyperbole. I wish it was. In 2009, the county began looking at reducing the greenhouse gas emissions that cause climate change. For a few years, county emissions were going down, but in the last few years, they've begun rising again. This is alarming and embarrassing. You face $5.7 billion worth of budget decisions. As you go through this budget, program by program, please ask yourself, what percent of that budget is worth devoting to save mankind, or more specifically, your descendants? There are numerous decisions you can take, especially in the areas of education, building codes, and transportation infrastructure, where you can continue on the current path with minimal incremental changes, or instead embrace the transition plan for a greener county and fundamentally change course. Even knowing this, you must be thinking that it doesn't matter what you do, since this is a global issue. In fact, the recent history of earned sick leave and the fight to raise the minimum wage have shown that what the Montgomery County Council does, what you do, directly impacts state decisions, and what the state does impacts the national debate. As a Jew, I can quote Rabbi Hillel, "If I am not for myself, who will be for me? If I am not for others, what am I? And if not now, when?" But maybe even more appropriate are the words of Jesuit priest Daniel Berrigan, who said "The difference between doing something and doing nothing is everything." For every decision you make today and every decision you make for the rest of the year, please consider if this will reduce greenhouse gas emissions. If not, then challenge whoever is pushing that choice to think again and come up with a better alternative for the sake of all of us.
Thank you. Julie Reiner?
Good evening. It was nice to see so many of you at the luncheon earlier today. My name is Julie Reiner. I'm the Managing Director of Luminous Studio Theater and also a founding member of the Theater Consortium of Silver Spring that manages the Black Box Theater. I thank you for this opportunity to talk with you about critical funding for the arts in Montgomery County during these changing times. The county has always been a strong supporter of the arts, and we appreciate that more than you know. Our county's mid- and small-size organizations believe the time has come, in a rapidly developing Montgomery County, to take a fresh look at the way those funds are allocated by the Arts and Humanities Council. An opinion, I believe, is shared by the leaders of the Arts Council and others who may testify over the next few days. The mid- and small-size organizations in Montgomery County are the backbone of the arts, preparing the youth of today to be the arts patrons of tomorrow. They offer a vast variety of opportunities for multicultural performances and arts exhibitions at affordable prices in the communities in which they serve. Studies have shown that young people who spend time in the arts learn to express themselves more articulately and can better think outside the box to solve problems in math and science. While the products and value given to our diverse communities in Luminous Case Silver Spring are great, we small arts organizations live on the tightest of margins, and funding from the local arts council can make the difference between meeting the needs of our communities and sometimes just surviving. Luminous doors have been open to anyone with an interest in acting, with or without experience and without audition. We've served 700-plus families and provide financial scholarships for low-income actors for the last 22 years. Our productions of Shakespeare, Dickens, and other language-rich classics on a professional stage have given county youth positive, life-changing experiences, both in rehearsals at the Silver Spring White House built by Teddy Roosevelt and onstage at the Silver Spring Black Box. Yet our funding has remained static for the last six years because of conditions placed on the Arts Humanities Council, keeping them from fairly allocating the budgeted funds to smaller arts groups who serve a variety of diverse communities where the demand is greatest. We trust the Arts Council and the leadership of Susan Jenkins, and ask that the current pre-existing conditions and earmarks be removed so that the Arts Council can distribute funds in a more equitable manner to all local arts organizations and the Montgomery County communities they serve. Thank you for your continued support of the arts and your willingness to consider a new way of allocating our funding.
Thank you. Ms. Judith Koenig. Yes. Okay, there you go.
I always tell people, if you've got $1,000, I'll buy a hearing aid. Let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. Hey, I'll take $100 from each of you. Unfortunately, I did not get back to the house to get my printed, so I'm going to do it for my notes. 1950, Rock Creek Forest Elementary School opened. I was in second grade. My brother was in fifth, one in first, and one in diapers, and at least 20 family members attended that school. At that point, there were no buses involved with the school. Ultimately, we started having buses going up and down Colston, stopping at the top of the steps. Kids would get on and off, and at one point, a bus had to go up onto the grass, onto the sidewalk, almost hitting a child, because another bus was coming down. Eventually, we were able to convince the county to put a circular drive in front of the school. When it became time after 10 years of stalling, we eventually got a new building which opened in September, excuse me, in January 2015. In order to put the circular drive for the buses on Colston, it was clearly understood to our community, buses go in on Grub, down Colston into the lot, out of the lot, back up to Colston, and down onto Grub, and then East West Highway. MCPS lied to us. They told the buses would not be going up and down Colston. They are going up and down Colston. I have documented at least 10. Last Friday, we had a bus coming in on Ellingson, it's not supposed to be there, turning to go up Colston, and a bus going down. Well, they cannot exist side by side. In fact, a car and the bus cannot on that road. So what happened? The MCPS bus had to back up, through a stop sign, into Ellingson, so the other school bus could go down before it could go up. These buses are not disposed to be there. My problem is, is I don't want to see a child killed, and I don't think any of you want to attend a funeral, which is what you're going to have to do. I'm asking that you tell MCPS to get the buses off of Colston and honor their commitment to use Grub Road, Colston into the lot, and back out and back up, rather than going up and down. One bus now, besides they running the stop signs all the time. Now he's decided he's going to turn left on Ellingson, go down to Washington Avenue, go in front of my house, stop in front of my house, then go down to Meadowbrook and out. There is parking on both sides of the street, except on Colston. It cannot get up and down. It's only a question of time before each of you get invited to a funeral. I'm asking that you please tell MCPS, I'm trying to come out and say, get their buses off of it, but I won't say that. Get their buses off of Colston, get them off of Ellingson, and get them off of Washington Avenue.
Thank you so much, Ms. Koenig.
I've got video of the situations that have occurred.
Thank you.
And if you don't do anything about it, you all get to go to a funeral.
Okay, we will definitely take note of that and will contact MCPS. We will take your testimony into consideration, and we will definitely let MCPS know. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Group B, now we'll hear from Group B. Herb Simmons, Ellie Kleinman, Jennifer Jones, Shannon Bay Thomas, Julie Tadale, and Jim Bradley. Herb Simmons, press the button at the base of the microphone.
Hello, yes. I'm Herb Simmons from Silver Spring. I'm here to ask you to take the emergency actions necessary to address the planetary climate crisis that each of you either committed to when you voted for the Emergency Mobilization Resolution way back now in 2017, making Montgomery the first jurisdiction in the country to declare a climate emergency, and the then-largest on the planet, or you supported it in your campaigns, if you're new to council. Or if, as is evident so far, you continue to have no intention of acting on an emergency scale and timetable, then please be honest with your constituents and repeal the resolution. It's way past time for this status quo. Act or repeal, unless we reduce our emissions, and Stu Simon said this very eloquently before, in half in a decade and begin massive CO2 removal, as the resolution commits Montgomery to do from the atmosphere, will have little chance of keeping the most catastrophic effects of climate change at bay. You've already frittered away almost 15% of the decade with inaction since you passed the resolution. What should you do? As many of us have urged time and time again, the first steps are very straightforward: foundational activities, a number of which can be done at minimal cost. First, talk about it. Publicize the emergency widely. Put notice on all county websites, including yours. Arrange with the county executive for public presentations to inform our residents of what they face and what we can do about it. Second, vet all major county actions, legislative and executive, by instituting what I have called a "climate test" to ensure that they advance the stated climate goal of an 80% reduction in greenhouse gases in eight years, as you do with fiscal notes. Earlier this year, one of you publicly committed to putting the test in place right away for council actions, were still waiting despite multiple follow-ups. Putting a climate test in place would likely make Montgomery County the first in the country, motivating others to do likewise till it became standard procedure. Lastly, put enough money in the budget to support the development of a broad-based citizen emergency plan, an action plan. We asked you to do so, you responded by refusing to add even one penny to the budget. Out of a plan would come a comprehensive legislative strategy for you to adopt so we can make the progress. There are exciting approaches to addressing climate, the positive end that can enhance the county's economy and quality of life, as I illustrated in the Montgomery 2030 vision that I sent to each one of you earlier this year. Now it's time for you to lead in the creation of a countywide vision that can become truly a national and international model. The climate won't get better with good intentions, only action will. Really, please, don't make me go and my colleagues to the national and local media in a month talking about climate hypocrisy.
Thank you. Ellie Kleinman?
Good evening. My name is Ellie Kleinman, and I'm a school counselor at New Hampshire State's Elementary School in Silver Spring. I'm advocating for full funding of the MCPS budget for the coming fiscal year. Your decisions with respect to public school funding affect many areas that are critical to achieving the success that we all want for all of our students in 2019 and beyond. I'm testifying tonight because I want to help council members have a clearer view of how your decisions with respect to funding impact issues around the mental health of our students, specifically the funding for mental health professionals who work within the school system, such as school counselors. The American School Counseling Association recommends a school counselor-to-student ratio of 1 to 250. While this current ratio exists in MCPS middle and high schools, the elementary school counselor-to-student ratio falls woefully short of this recommendation. For the past two years, I was the school counselor at College Gardens Elementary School, where we had a school counselor-to-student ratio of 1.5 to over 900 students. This example is representative of the ratio in most elementary schools, where it is common to find just one counselor in the school to support between 500 and 700 students. Due to its Title I status, New Hampshire State has had an improved ratio in recent years, but is now facing the loss of the school's part-time counselor for next year. The impact of this decision is troubling, especially when we, as a county, say that we want to do more to be trauma-sensitive in schools and to help close the achievement gap. New Hampshire State has the second-highest farms rate in the county at about 90%, and 66% of our students are ESOL students, one of the highest rates in MCPS. Our school is made up overwhelmingly of immigrants and the children of immigrants, most of whom are from Central America. We regularly receive students who are new to the United States and who have faced challenges in their native countries, including civil war, paramilitary death squads, gangs, and violent crime resulting in secondary trauma. It's not uncommon for both myself and my part-time co-counselor to work with students who have had a parent who's been deported, who are themselves at risk of deportation, or who've experienced significant anxiety around the difficulties adjusting to their new life in the United States, with immediate family members left behind in their country of origin. Two and a half years ago, the fire and explosion at the Flower Branch Apartments killed seven people, including a first grader at New Hampshire State. The New Hampshire State's community was heavily impacted, not only by the trauma of displacement, but also by the fear that another explosion would occur, and the trauma of traveling daily past half-destructioned apartment buildings. Again, in the face of these challenges, New Hampshire State was recently informed that our .5 counselor position was not funded for next year. What the loss of this half-time counselor will mean is that we will become largely reactionary in order to deal with the many needs of our community, and will no longer be able to provide proactive mental health programs or services, including mindfulness classes for our second-grade students, psychoeducational groups to help students with anxiety and resilience, and less time in the classroom, thereby placing more of a burden on our teachers. At a time when we, as a county, say that we want to close the achievement gap, we need to provide full funding for MCPS and work with the school board to ensure that a sufficient number of mental health professionals, such as school counselors, are put in place to support the physical, social, and psychological well-being of our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jennifer Jones?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Jennifer Jones, and I'm glad to be speaking to you again this year. I'm asking you to please fully fund the MCPS FY20 budget because our elementary students' mental health is counting on it. I grew up in Germantown, own a home there, and work at my neighborhood school as an elementary school counselor. I'm the coordinator for the Elementary School Counselor Caucus affiliated with MCEA, and several of you know me from the Montgomery County Mental Health Advisory Committee. As an MCPS employee for 27 years, 20 as an elementary school counselor, I have seen increasingly serious challenges and impact that impact the mental health of our students. In elementary schools, we see many social, emotional, and behavioral issues that were previously only seen in middle and high schools. For example, on Friday, I conducted two suicide threat assessments, with one leading to a Crisis Center referral. These are primary-grade students. Two weeks ago, I conducted five suicide threat assessments in less than three days for two primary and three upper-grade students. As the only elementary school counselor for 550 students, during the past few weeks, I have helped students exposed to physical abuse, homelessness, parents struggling with addictions and incarceration, serious custody concerns, poverty, chronic absenteeism, and the extremely negative influence of social media causing bullying and other very hurtful words and actions. These challenges interfere with our students' emotional availability to learn. Many of our students have mental health and behavior issues, including depression, anxiety, oppositional defiant disorder, and several who have demonstrated violent aggression. You may not be aware that in February, Board of Education member Jeanette Dixon proposed, and the Board of Ed passed, an MCPS operating budget amendment that would add three more elementary- elementary counselor positions. I was thrilled to testify in support of six more elementary schools out of 134 having another half-time counselor in addition to their full-time counselor. You may not think another half-time counselor is a big deal, but when schools have 700 students and only one counselor, an additional half-time counselor makes a huge difference. We need your support to make sure the budget amendment is funded. Three years ago, several of my elementary school counselor colleagues and I presented to you a seriously inequitable elementary school counselor ratio problem. In the majority of elementary schools, there is only one school counselor per building with anywhere from 400 to 700 or more students. Last year, a ratio of 1 to 250 was implemented across all middle and high schools, as recommended by the American School Counselor Association for all K-12 schools regardless of their farms rates. As you know, school, social, and emotional needs cut across all zip codes. The elementary school counselor staffing formulas, as reflected below, show inadequate ratios dependent on farms rates and if a school is Title I or Focus. My colleagues and I continue to advocate for an equitable 1 to 250 ratio at all elementary schools regardless of farms rates. We know pre-kindergarten leads to success in elementary school, and in the same way, elementary students need more mental health supports to be successful in middle and high school. Please fully fund the MCPS budget. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Shannon Bay Thomas?
Good evening. I'm Shannon Bay Thomas, the Executive Director of Community Bridges. On behalf of Community Bridges, our board, our staff, our girls and the families we serve, we want to thank the county for your continued support to the organization. For over 21 years, Community Bridges has been empowering girls from diverse backgrounds to become exceptional students, positive leaders, and healthy young women. Community Bridges supports girls here in Montgomery County that are living in poverty. This year, over 86% of our families have an annual income of $45,000 or less. Our unique approach centers around a holistic strategy, empowering young girls to excel academically, gain leadership skills, and have healthy minds and bodies on a nine-year continuum from fourth grade through 12th grade, through our after-school, our mentoring programs, our college and career, and our family programs. This allows us to provide support during the transition, the significant transitions between elementary and middle school and middle school and high school. Our girls entering high school know that college is a real option for them. Through our mentorship and programmatic support, girls will break the cycle of poverty for themselves and their families. We've been able to expand our reach this year by an additional 25%. We're serving over 360 girls in 14 MCPS schools, with that transition still happening with more schools next year. I want to share with you what a junior at Montgomery Blair High School recently said, Alice. "Community Bridges has truly changed my life by just being here for me and my family. Freshman year, I didn't have high hopes for my future because of my living status and how bad my family's financial status was. Community Bridges has not only given me so many opportunities for the future, but has also really got me prepared for life after high school, and I now know attending college is a real possibility." We collaborate with our school's guidance counselors, and they know what services we offer our girls, and they are often referring more girls to us. They know that since our program began, 100% of our girls have graduated from high school and 100% have gone on to college. We've expanded our college and career planning program, and we've averaged two college tours per month and one workshop per month this year. All 37 of our high school seniors are on track to graduate high school, and all have been accepted to a college and/or university. In fact, I want to share with you, I just learned this weekend, that Hula, a senior at Lake High School, has been accepted to NYU. She saw NYU this fall with Community Bridges, and after she went to New York, New York was where she wanted to be. So she'll be NYU next year on scholarships. I want to ensure that more girls like Alice, Hula, and over the 4,000 girls we've served in the last 21 years have the opportunity to achieve their dreams. I urge the council to look at the 2020 operating budget, and I'm requesting the county council include a 3% increase in the nonprofit contracts. This will ensure that the nonprofits are able to continue offering the services and the support that is needed, ensure that our staff has a living wage, and it will allow Community Bridges to help our girls become exceptional students, positive leaders, and healthy young women here in Montgomery County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Julie Tadell?
Good evening, Council. I'm Julie Taddio, and I'm speaking on behalf of Safe Grow Montgomery, the coalition which advocated for the successful passage of the Healthy Lawns Act in 2015. Some of my colleagues wanted to be here tonight, but they're in New York, meeting with Dwayne Johnson, the plaintiff who sued and won against Monsanto, and they're there promoting our county as a model of what lawmakers and activists can achieve when they work together. Thanks to many of you and our current executive, we were the first county in the country to pass such a law restricting lawn pesticides, and council members in New York City are trying to emulate us. While the private lawns provision is tied up in court, the part that applies to county property and parks remains intact, which is why I'm here today. Safe Grow remains concerned about the continued use of glyphosate by the Parks Department, which even more studies since the law passed have linked to cancer in humans as well as bee decline. Parks' recent letter to council uses the EPA as a gold standard to reassure us of its safety, but especially today, we cannot trust our children's health to an agency so influenced by the very industry it regulates. In just the last week, several municipalities across the country have issued bans on glyphosate due to concerns over its safety, and we hope the council will press Parks to do the same. But it isn't just glyphosate. We'd like to see further reduction of pesticide use in general, especially in Brookside Gardens, for the removal of routine, not invasive weeds, in the true spirit of IPM policy. We ask, therefore, that any money allocated by council to Parks should not be used for applications of pesticides, especially glyphosate, on spaces most frequented by children in the park system. Since the council oversees part of Parks' budget, we also request continued oversight by TNE with a hearing hopefully scheduled later this spring, once you're done with your budget hearings. For updates on Parks' progress on turning more parks pesticide-free, because in four years, only 10 of the 420 parks have gone pesticide-free. The hearing would also provide an update on playing fields transition, which is due by 2020, and actual data, which Councilmember Hooker has often asked for and we haven't gotten, on a breakdown of costs for contractors, pesticides, costs of storage, disposal, et cetera. Maintaining parks like Brookside Gardens with as few pesticides as possible is exactly what we should be doing to meet the demands of climate change. Fewer pesticides on grass means less runoff and improved water quality, as well as protection for pollinators and healthier kids. If Parks needs additional funds to do this, then I would hope council supports this, but not the other way around, not more money for more pesticides and doing the same old thing. Lastly, please continue to support DEP in its education and outreach efforts, because since 2015, we now have a great educator, Mary Travaglini, who's been on the website and brochures and workshops, but she needs to do more to reach more people in the community. So thank you for being part of this effort, and I hope you'll continue to support healthy lawns and parks in our county.
Thank you. Jim Bradley?
President Navarro, members of the council. I'm Jim Bradley, representing the Walter Johnson Cluster. First, let me express our gratitude to Mr. Freedson for his support of community efforts to address the integrity of MCPS enrollment forecasts. We also thank Mr. Rice for holding a hearing on this important topic. Included is an appendix to our written testimonies, an exchange of letters between parent advocates and MCPS on enrollment forecasts. These forecasts matter for the capital and operating budget decisions that you have to make. You deserve the best data possible. We also attached our full testimony before the Board of Education on the operating budget, which describes in detail the needs of our cluster and MCPS at large. The WJ Cluster supports the Board's request and strongly opposes the county executive's proposed cut of more than $14 million. We associate ourselves with the letter of March 21st and Dr. Smith and President Evans. Seven of the nine of you represent the WJ Cluster, all are part of it, but all nine of you represent students who attend WJ schools. We host countywide special needs programming that is critical to students from all across the county. When our schools are starved of resources, when class sizes balloon and buildings far exceed capacity, students from all five of your districts suffer. Walter Johnson High School will, if the projections are correct, and we believe they are too low, soon exceed its capacity by nearly 700 students. Please remember this as you consider development plans impacting our cluster. Please remember this as you consider future capital budgets. And please remember this as you consider this operating budget. It's not just our high school that is under pressure. The recommended elementary to counselor, counselor-to-student ratio, as you heard, is 1 to 250. At Farmland Elementary School, that ratio is 1 to 540. Board's budget attempts to improve this. The county executive's budget puts that improvement in jeopardy. F-Farmland is in the epicenter of the Pike District development, and its situation will be made worse by the city of Rockville's recent decision with respect to its APFO. Please remember that real children suffer from such choices when you consider revisions to the SSP. MCPS enrollment continues to grow. The Board's budget is designed to manage growth, including support for students requiring more specialized services, such as special ed and ESOL. The county must fund the personnel increases necessary to keep the promise all of us have made, that all students have the means and opportunity to succeed, which, as we've seen from the equity surveys that have just come out recently, that's not necessarily the case. Now is not the time to cut school funding. Now, many parents would prefer to see larger increases, because class sizes are still too large and staffing ratios are inadequate. However, we know that the council hears many competing worthy needs. Students and families in MCPS use the libraries and enjoy our parks and recreational facilities. We're grateful to first responders. Sadly, too many of our students and families throughout the county are homeless, and others desperately rely upon the health services I'm proud this county provides to our most vulnerable neighbors. We know you have a difficult job balancing priorities, but we ask you to reject the county executive's proposed cuts and fund the Board's request, because the small increases proposed are barely what's necessary to keep pace with the enrollment growth. Again, thank you to all of you for the work that you do on behalf of our county and for the opportunity to testify before you today.
Thank you so much. Ms. Kleinman and Dr. Jones, thank you so much for everything that you do as counselors, very important role that you play in the schools, and we will be taking a very close look at the school and the Board of Education's requested funding, but really do appreciate what you do. I know how hard it is. Thank you. Group C, Emily Maxwell, Barry Whitey, Chris Lloyd, Maritza Rivera, Yi Young Cho, and Christopher Bowerman. Okay, we'll begin with Emily Maxwell.
Good evening, members of the Montgomery County Council. I am pleased to be speaking with you. My name is Emily Maxwell, and I am a lifelong Montgomery County resident. I graduated from Quinsorshire High School, and I currently live in Gaithersburg. I am here to ask you to fully fund the Montgomery College operating budget request, because I know personally how this institution benefits students and our community. I know because I had a career-changing experience with the college's clinical trial project management class in workforce development and continuing education. I graduated from Towson University a semester early in December of 2016 with honors. I majored in community health science and minored in gerontology. I had so many ideas of what I wanted to accomplish in my career. My main goal was to have a career that would help people and fulfill my desire to make a difference in the world. I had no idea where to start, as many jobs require experience or a master's degree. In my searching for the next step, I came across the clinical trial project management class at MC. With further research, I learned how large the clinical trial and pharmaceutical company industry is and how it could be a great career. I enrolled in the class, which took place every Saturday morning for three hours over 13 weeks. To my satisfaction, the class was very informative in preparing me for a career in drug development and managing clinical trials. I learned many important job skills, such as project management, statistics, safety, and more. At the end of the course, we gave a formal presentation to a panel of experts in the field. I emerged as a leader. Because AMRAX, a clinical research organization partnered with Montgomery College to create the, to create and teach industry-relevant curriculum, I reached out to them at the end of the class in hopes of a job opportunity. I applied, interviewed, and was hired in a month's time. I was so excited to start my career and learn about even more opportunities to grow. Where am I now? I have been at AMRAX for a year and three months. I am almost halfway through my master's degree in clinical research administration at George Washington University, which AMRAX is helping me pay for. Before I turn 25, I will have three years of experience in my master's degree. With Montgomery College's clinical trial project management program, I received a certificate that gave me the job skills I need to not only get a job, but a career. I can more clearly see the possibilities are endless for where I can take my career. I am grateful for AMRAX for giving me my first job. I am forever grateful for Montgomery College for providing this program, which gave me the opportunity to shape my career and my future. Thank you for listening to my story and for supporting the Montgomery College operating budget request. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Barry Whitey?
Good evening. I'm Barry Whitey, president of the North White Oak Civic Association, Silver Spring. I'm here to discuss the need for adequate 2020 operating budget funding for county activities to, one, carry out the White Oak Science Gateway Master Plan, and, two, fund necessary increases to DHCA's budget in order to properly implement the expansion of the county's ADU program as envisioned in proposed ETA 1901. For the past few years, I've served on the county executive's Friends of White Oak Group Community Advisory Board to inform and engage the civic and business community around the implementation of the White Oak Science Gateway Master Plan. One of the focus areas has been marketing and placemaking efforts for communities which comprise the White Oak Master Plan area. The Friends of White Oak Group has organized, has helped to create the marketing strategy proposal, which was recently developed by Sharp &amp; Company under contract with the county. The marketing strategy calls for an aggressive outreach campaign to establish a sense of place for White Oak, and includes creation of a logo, thematic signage for the community's streetlight banners, organized community activities, as well as coordination with the Food and Drug Administration. Our civic association would like to request the council approve $150,000 to move forward with the first phase of the marketing plan. Next, our association would request that the council be poised to budget funds for more DHCA staff who will be needed to process and inspect additional ADUs resulting from proposed ETA 1901. At the April 1 Fed Committee briefing on housing code enforcement, DHCA indicated that just one person reviews ADU applications, and the person has other job responsibilities in addition to reviewing these applications. At the Fed Committee's ETA 1901 work sessions, there was discussion of the county possibly providing loans to homeowners to finance the conversion of non-licensed basement apartments to co-compliant ADUs pursuant to the pending legislation. We would support providing such loans and funds may be needed to be appropriated for this purpose as well. And finally, it's our hope that the county council will pass companion legislation to ETA 1901 to require periodic inspections of the ADUs and other single-family rental properties, including room rentals and owner-occupied homes, as has been done in Baltimore County for 10 years. Periodic inspections of multifamily properties have been mandated since the Flower Branch apartment tragedy in 2015. Currently, single-family rental inspections are only performed in response to tenant or neighborhood complaints, and there have been a number of house fires in single-family and basement units that could possibly have been avoided had there been regular inspection of these homes. I've included excerpts from articles about three such home fires in the written portion of my testimony. It's our hope that inspections of such single-family rental properties is mandated by the council that additional funding for DHCA inspectors be provided as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Chris Lloyd? Maritza Rivera?
Good evening.
Please press the button at the base.
Good evening, Council President Navarro, Vice President Katz, and members of the Montgomery County Council. My name is Maritza Rivera, and I've been a resident of Rockville, Maryland since 1994, where I lived with my children, who attended and graduated from Montgomery County Public Schools. As a participant of the Community Action Institute, I am providing my testimony tonight to bring attention to the need for an English immersion program for non-native English-language learners enrolled in Montgomery County Public Schools. Immersion is a proven method for foreign language acquisition and what is English if not a foreign language to non-native speakers. Betty Embo testified earlier today in French about a similar concern. I have a degree in English and Linguistics, am a former U.S. Army Senior Military Instructor working with foreign officers learning English. I've worked as an elementary, middle school, special education, English immersion specialist in Puerto Rico, and was recruited there by Montgomery County Public Schools to teach Spanish immersion at Rock Creek Forest Elementary School that you heard about earlier, still on growth. I have taught English at the International Language Institute in Gaithersburg and have served as a volunteer English instructor at the Gilchrist Center in Wheaton. I've worked with students of all ages and have seen them walk into a classroom with knowing very little English and become functional in just months, not years, later. MCPS offers Spanish, French, Chinese immersion programs at seven elementary and five middle schools in the county. But just like these foreign language immersion programs provide students with native-like competency, non-native English-speaking students would likewise benefit from an English immersion program. I am advocating for the creation and funding of an English immersion program that would focus on the cultural, academic, and language acquisition needs of non-English-speaking students at MCPS. This would augment and enhance existing programs, and ultimately, I believe that incorporating an English immersion program would reduce the dropout rate and improve the graduation rate of English-language learners in Montgomery County. Studies have shown that English immersion is the quickest and most effective means of learning a new language, so why not English? of learning a new language, so why not English? Please consider funding an English immersion program at Montgomery County Public Schools. I am bilingual in English and Spanish because of English immersion. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yi Young Cho.
Good evening, Council President and Council members. My name is Ji Young Cho, Executive Director of Korean Community Service Center. On behalf of our staff, volunteers, and friends of KCSC, I would like to express great appreciation for your continuing support of the Asian-American community of Montgomery County. According to a 2015 Pew Research Center report, Asians are the fastest-growing ethnic group in the United States. Current census data shows that over 180,000 Asians make their home in Montgomery County, and more than 85% of the target population, primarily Korean and Chinese residents, speaks a language other than English at home. Despite the overall wealth of Montgomery County, there are still higher-than-average numbers of low-income, uninsured, and limited English proficient individuals within our community. I would like to share with you the story of one of our clients. Last year, about an hour after eating dinner with his family, our client, Mr. Park, had a heart attack and had to rush to the hospital. The thought of dying and leaving his wife and three children was terrifying to him, nevertheless, he had to have two major surgeries right away. He was left in so much pain that he could barely sit, stand, or even lie down. As soon as the physical pain got a bit better, he started to feel burdened by his financial situation, especially since he wasn't able to work while recovering from the surgery. The family was already heavily in debt paying for the daily they owned, plus they had been dealing with their daughter's Turner Syndrome, which needed ongoing and very expensive treatment. At the time, Mr. Park came to KCSC to find out if there was any government assistance for the family. Our social worker explained that he didn't qualify for government case assistance. However, KC's own safety net program could provide support. Through this program, he was able to get three months of rental assistance for the time he was unable to work, and grocery coupons for food. The KC staff helped him applying for Medicaid benefits for his medical bills. KC's volunteer financial expert also worked with him to sort out his finance. This case is just one of the many stories of the people we serve through our social services and safety net programs. Montgomery County funding provides crucial support of the operational portion of the safety net program, while the emergency case assistance fund is possible thanks to the individual donation from Korean community members and ethnic church congregations. Together, this partnership helps clients like Mr. Park to overcome many difficult challenges and quickly stabilize their lives and move forward. We are proud, very proud of what we do at KCSC and the difference we make for every client we serve. It is an ongoing process, and to continue to make possible difference and ensure a healthier and more secure community, we need the continued support of the county and the council members. We sincerely appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Bowerman.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Bowerman, and I am an MCC PTA Cluster Coordinator for the Watkins Mill Cluster. I appreciate you hearing me tonight. I'm here to advocate for the county's education budget, but more specifically for the Watkins Mill Cluster needs. Since becoming Cluster Coordinator, the general theme that I have experienced and expressed when speaking for Watkins Mill Cluster is that of a forgotten cluster. During the past decade, the communities and schools surrounding Montgomery Village have seen the benefits of major development, while our cluster remains in need of attention. My plea is that you make the needs of the Watkins Mill students a priority. Our cluster is one of the most transient in the county, with a large portion of shared housing families. Our enrollments have increased in numbers not expected, and our teachers struggle every day to teach children who have moved many times, are increasingly underprivileged, and many are English-language learners. The farms rate exceeds 50% at six out of seven of our schools, and our elementary ESOL rates are almost twice the rate of the county average. A change in demographic or economic level of living shouldn't change the quality of education, but it has. We ask that you remain committed to providing and sustaining equity to all students with regards to resources and access to opportunities so that each student can pursue their path to success. At the core of our education system is a basic rule that effective and highly qualified teachers and staff are needed to successfully learn. Our schools are struggling to attract and retain such qualified and experienced personnel. Specific to staffing, I recently learned that the South Lake Elementary School, which is located near Lake Forest Mall and other high-traffic areas, has no crossing guard. We need our students to be safe as they cross the streets. How is it possible that any elementary school does not have a crossing guard? Our schools are now aged and worn. They need maintenance, such as flooring repair and furniture replacement. Several of our school's media centers are in desperate need of new furniture. At the start of the school year, I visited each school, and it was obvious that basic maintenance that should have been performed over the summer was not complete. Outside, the lawns were overgrown, and inside, the halls were dirty. Whetstone Elementary School, being unable to get maintenance to paint the chipped and worn walls, finally went to Home Depot and asked for a grant for paint and held a painting party to complete the work before classes began. Several of our schools lack basic technology equipment needed in today's world. Montgomery Village Middle has 17 classrooms without Promethium boards. Most of these rooms are for ESOL and special education classes, a huge concern. We'd like to see them in every classroom. Montgomery County has many clusters that holds up as representative of our impressive education system. We ask that you reflect. Would you want Watkins Mill to be representative of our county's schools? Tonight, we ask you to help Watkins Mill Cluster be included with those others in the county's great standing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rice.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Mr. Bowerman, I just wanted to let you know that your voice and the voice of the Watkins Mill Cluster community has been heard. You'll know that Nielsville Middle School and South Lake Elementary School are both in our CIP for those schools to be redone, so I can assure you, you guys are not forgotten.
We're looking forward to that.
Thank you so much, and thanks for coming out to testify.
Thank you. Group D, Patricia Winters, Elida Morinigo, Michelle Muller, Arian Ross, Peter Doherty, and Dina Goldman. We'll start with Patricia Winters. Patricia, yeah, there is a button at the base there. Yes.
Esteemed Council President Navarro, Vice President Katz, and Council members, let us all shout from the rooftops that recovery education has returned to Montgomery County. My name is Patty Winters. I am the proud leader of Phoenix Rising Maryland Recovery School Advocates. Montgomery County has bragging rights to opening the nation's, possibly the world's, first recovery high school, the Phoenix School, in 1979. After 23 years of saving hundreds of students and healing their families, the Phoenix School was blended with other MCPS alternative programs. Predictably, the relapse rate escalated, and this new model ultimately failed the kids and their families. Phoenix closed in 2013 with three students. Students in recovery from a substance use disorder face a 90% relapse risk when they return to their home school from treatment. The closest recovery education options are privately funded in Philadelphia and Richmond. As of last September, the closest free option is the Recovery Academic Program located in Gaithersburg. We know relapse is a part of the addiction disease, and that recovery in teens is fragile. They need to establish roots for their sobriety with an alternative peer group and professionals who understand the complex nature of adolescence recovery before they can reunite with peers who engage in risky behaviors. This is a given in a successful program, and it's at the heart of RAP. The students have expressed excitement about having a second chance for a prosperous future, and even want to join the administrators on outreach visits to share their experience on how RAP has helped them regain their self-respect and motivation to be a responsible citizen. You don't have to take my word. Visit RAP and speak with the students and staff. Be prepared to be blown away, and you will see why the MCPS budget must be supported in full to meet the needs of its growing enrollment. Recovery School expert Dr. Andrew Frinch summed it up. Opening the doors to students who have not yet become addicted to opiates attacks the opiate epidemic at its roots. Closing the doors to students at high risk who have not yet developed an opiate problem could unintentionally allow the opiate crisis to fester. Support the full MCPS budget so RAP can remain free for any Montgomery County 12- to 17-year-old, some 18-year-olds with any substance use disorder, including alcohol and marijuana, and shatter the stigma of addiction and recovery. Thank you for your continued service to our children and our community.
Thank you. Elida Morinigo. Michelle Muller.
Good evening, Council President Navarro, Council members, and members of the community. My name is Michelle Muller, and I am a Northwood Cluster Coordinator and parent of two students in MCPS and a recent MCPS graduate. First of all, we do appreciate the current operating budget proposal, but we must ask for more. The county executive budget funds 99.5% of the superintendent's operating budget request. Let me ask you, how great would it feel to say that you funded 100% of our school system's budget request? One-half of 1% is all we're asking for. Is that too much to invest in our children's future? I hope not. So let me tell you how that one-half of 1% more funding could be used in the Northwood Cluster and in other down-county schools. Many of our classes are just too large for teachers to teach and students to learn effectively. Although many of our K-2 classes benefit from reduced class sizes, upper grades can have up to 32 kids in an elementary school classroom. That number is just too high for the type of learning and teaching we want our students to engage in. Granting us that additional one-half percent would go a long way towards providing more teachers and lowering class sizes throughout our schools. Additionally, when budgets are underfunded, we have seen enrichment opportunities in our schools decline or be eliminated. As the ratio of students to teachers increases, opportunities to provide accelerated and enriched instruction shrink, and the teacher's workload grows. Just as we are required to support students who need extra help, we must also help students who need enrichment beyond what the curriculum provides. If you fund the remaining one-half percent of the operating budget, we pledge to fight for restoring teachers and enrichment opportunities for all students. Across all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, we have a need for more ESOL teachers, and, as so eloquently stated by Ms. Kleiman and Dr. Jones, "school counselors", particularly ESOL counselors, for students who have experienced trauma. The ratio of ESOL students to ESOL teachers at our schools has increased over the past few years. Some of the one-half percent of funding would go to decrease the ESOL student-teacher ratio at our schools and increase the number of counselors available to advise our students and help them through their difficult times. And I can't leave here without saying, our students strongly support the expansion of the Kids Ride Free Program on ride-on buses. Students who live within two miles of their high schools have to walk through areas that are poorly lit in the morning or cross pedestrian hostile major thoroughfares with poorly timed lights and inattentive drivers. If a student misses their school bus and their family doesn't have money to pay for a bus ride, should they be forced to abdicate their education? A $2 fare may not be much to an adult, but to a student whose family is struggling, it is a barrier to education, jobs, and internships. As Councilmember Rice often says, "This budget represents the priorities and values of our county." In Montgomery County, we value education, we should value equity, and we must invest in our students for the future of this county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Arian Ross.
Can I press it? Oh, yes. Sorry. As a mother and artist and educator and a lifelong resident of Montgomery County, I have witnessed our community, a large percentage of youth, of adults, who feel they have no voice, who feel that their voice doesn't matter, that if they speak up, that no change will come about from their voice speaking. I have witnessed a lack of equity between those who receive extra educational programs because they can simply afford it and those who cannot afford it. I am here as a mother, and I specifically chose not to represent myself as Executive Director of Story Tapestry, but as a mother because I've lived here my whole life. I grew up in Bethesda, and I'm not going to lie when I don't say that I totally grew up with rose-colored glasses over my eyes. I know exactly where I lived, and I know exactly what my community was, and yet I still faced racism. I still face issues. I still face problems. But then my journey changed and shifted when I married a man who was an immigrant, an African-Brazilian man. When I watched us walk into the DMV in Maryland and have his information be deleted from the system, and he was informed that he wasn't a Maryland resident, they didn't know what I was speaking about, even though we had all of the paperwork that had been scanned in Gaithersburg. When the interpreter told us outside of the testing space, because he had an interpreted test, that, in fact, his results, he didn't fail, he'd actually passed. When my daughter was six years old, she was bullied for bringing the brown-haired girl in the classroom, and her principal said, "Your daughter's no angel, and sometimes boys will be boys." I leave that because I think that's important in the simple fact that Story Tapestry and the work that I do in this organization and the work I do as a mother makes a huge difference. I've seen children and youth say to me at Nielsville Middle School, "You know, adults don't really care about us. We're not that important." And then he seemed shocked that I spent 20 minutes helping him draw a picture and tell his story. I firmly believe that Story Tapestry's project Amplify Us should be a part of the budget or should at least be a part of the conversation. I think its programs are needed to create the next generation of leaders, to combat the inequities of our educational system, and to support the youngest childhood, from the littles to the large. I end with the voice of my students. These are their words from Montgomery Village. "In the beginning, the world was whole. Life was perfect. Then it became us, them, man, woman, black, white. There's so much separating us. It's now like each person is on their own island." Thank you for all listening.
Thank you so much. Peter Doherty.
Thank you, President Navarro, and members of the council. My name is Peter Doherty, and I'm asking the council to include money in the 2020 fiscal year budget for funds enabling the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission to prepare a limited master plan amendment to the 2002 Potomac Subregion Master Plan. This was approved by Council Resolution 18423 in 2016, but has yet to be funded. I'm a resident of the Glen Hills area in the Potomac Highlands subdivision, which abuts the Watts Branch Creek. I have an aging, pre-1975 drywell septic system that is working fine today, but will inevitably fail. My yard is less than 1,000 feet uphill from the Watts Branch Creek, which empties into the Potomac River just above the WSSC Water Filtration Plant that serves much of the county. A small stream that empties into the Watts Branch Creek runs along my property less than 100 feet from my drywells. A septic failure would likely cause sewage to flow into the creek. The very restrictive sewer policy that the council adopted last year for the Glen Hills area requires a demonstrated failure before a sewer study can even be started. In other words, the council effectively mandated an environmental problem must happen before a remedy can even be considered. The council even went so far as to impose those new restrictive rules on a sewer survey for myself and my neighbors that was already completed to the point of being sent to the county executive. Those who pressured the council to take that action are convinced that any extension of sewer service will lead to massive development. Nothing could be further from the truth. I am firmly opposed to any development in my neighborhood. Not only do our covenants prohibit this, but Resolution 18423 expressly prohibits any subdivision of lots receiving sewer service and prohibits sewer service being extended to vacant lots. I'm gravely concerned about the environmental damage that could happen if I or my neighbors have a septic failure. Waiting for failures on properties that close to a vital, environmentally sensitive area is inexcusable. We need a proactive, orderly plan to avoid this. Funding the planning work is the only money I and my neighbors will be asking of the county. We, the homeowners, have to pay for sewer out of our own pockets. Our only hope of being able to afford it is the ability to work together with our immediate neighbors, and the fact that there is sewer right down the street in the middle of our neighborhood. It's been there for years. If council members have concerns about sewer leading to development, go over to Frost Middle School, drive south and Overly Drive. The first block is where I live and where I need sewer. The second block is where they have sewer. You won't see any difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Dina Goldman. Deana Goldman?
Good evening. My name is Deana Goldman and I am the Partnerships and Innovations Director at Story Tapestries. I am here tonight to urge you to support Story Tapestries in our effort to create a more equitable Montgomery County by emboldening the voices of the county's most marginalized residents and provide funding to Amplify Us this year. Amplify Us is an innovative initiative that provides workshops that guide residents ages 12 and above to find their voice and effectively advocate for themselves and their own communities. The program grew out of a desire to combat a growth in hate crimes that was reported by Montgomery County Police Department and the inequities that are faced by many Montgomery County residents. Our workshops result in, one, better understanding between residents of different backgrounds and perspectives, and, two, residents becoming equipped to engage in civic engagement and to promote their interests and those of their individual communities. Our workshops are led by a teaching artist and a trained facilitator. Why an artist? To be clear, this is not an art project, but art is used as the tool because art has a way of breaking down barriers and creating an environment where people feel comfortable to express themselves that other strategies do not. One of our collaborators at another program at Nielsville Middle School, we keep bringing it up, recently said to us, "How do you get these kids to talk about race so deeply?" It's through art. Art is not -- it is what makes Amplify Us work, but it is not the outcome. The trained facilitator are at all workshops because they help it be an inclusive environment and they navigate the challenging subjects that generally arise when people are talking about their personal experiences. Amplify Us furthers the county's interest in becoming more inclusive and equitable place. Emboldening people to share their stories and use their experiences to find common ground will lead to better relations between different communities of people in this county. For example, in a workshop last year, an elderly man told a story of coming to the U.S. from Europe. He talked as if it was an unusual story of being separated from his parents for a lengthy amount of time until they were finally reunited in the United States. Well, there sat a 12-year-old who was from South America and said, "You just told my story." Through Amplify Us, these community members who seemed so different found common ground. But it doesn't just shift perspectives. It gives our residents the tools to advocate for themselves, and guess what? We do it all the time. We have to -- I'm doing it right now. We do it when we're applying for a job. We do it when we're in a medical situation, in a school situation. If we want to give people who feel unheard and feel their voices are suppressed a voice, they need the skills so that they can advocate for themselves and this will create concrete change. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we are going to move to Group E. Thank you so much. Susan Harton, Zelda Wayfarolange, Wanda Bautista, Craig Perry, Carla Gorham, and Jason Nuringer. She'll be at the base there in the microphone, right there.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Susan Hartung and I have been a fierce advocate for individuals with developmental disabilities for over 30 years. I have also been a special education teacher in Montgomery County Public Schools for over 20 years, but the most important job I have is being a mother to four children. My son, Warren, is 33 years old and has autism, cerebral palsy, and epilepsy. And my daughter, Emily, who is 29, also has autism, mood disorder, and epilepsy. The journey my husband and I have been on these past decades has been more than challenging. I honestly don't know how we've made it this far, but the one thing I do know is that Montgomery County has always been here for us. Today, I'm asking you to be there again, not just for my children, but for the 3,800 other children who the providers of services for this population serve every day by including full funding for the Developmental Disability Supplement for the next fiscal year. I know that you are aware why this is an issue. After decades of fully funding the supplement, it's supposed to be reduced this year. It is costly to live in Montgomery County. According to the Economic Policy Institute, we have the highest cost of living in the state. For a family, Ford is over $104,000 a year, $15,000 higher than PG County. The average two-bedroom apartment in Montgomery County is over $1,700 a month. However, organizations that provide residential services to developmentally disabled, like my children, are allowed to only charge clients $375 a month for room and board. For many reasons, providers use non-traditional methods of payment to their direct support staff. Shockingly, there is a turnover rate of 45% in the direct care service providers. Staffing must be round-the-clock, requiring either shift differential or overtime wages. Overtime bonuses for free room and board, tuition assistant are all methods that different providers use to encourage individuals to get in the field and stay in the field. Through the years, my direct port staff have endured so many hardships because of their care of my children. They have held them through seizures, cleaned up them after toileny accidents, washed them, fed them, dressed them, taught them how to care for themselves, expressed their needs, and most importantly, loved them. Because of the devotion, my son today delivers meals on wheels to shut-ins and my daughter works not one, but two jobs. You must know that I would not -- the last thing I would do is ask for funds that I did not believe are going into the hands of the people who take care of individuals like my children. This decision will ultimately hurt the clients, the direct care staff, and the county. Over the last two years, almost 50 youth who have been aged out of our school system are still not receiving services from provider. This decision will only increase those numbers. Reducing the DZ supplement leaves the impression that these organizations are trying to profit from the county and not pass the profits on to staff. Does anyone really think that anybody goes into this field to become wealthy? I don't think so. The providers of services to developmental disabilities have asked to work with Montgomery County to provide explanations of how they calculate their average wages and time to transition to mutually agreeable ways to demonstrate their care. Direct care staff are providing 125% or receiving that above minimum wage. Please give them that opportunity. I am confident that caring, intelligent people in this county can work together to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Zelda Wayfarolange?
Good evening. My name is Zelda Wayfarolange and I am here on behalf of the Head Start's Parent Policy Council, where I serve as the chair. The Policy Council includes the parents of the children in Montgomery County Public School Head Start and Pre-K programs and serves as the advocacy group for these programs. First, I want to thank the council for its support of the county's bold new early care and education initiative. The Policy Council supports the county's efforts to expand high-quality Pre-K programs utilizing a mixed delivery system. We are thrilled that the county is making this issue a priority and has committed to implementing policies in the next five years to ensure that all young children have access to high-quality programs. The Policy Council would also like to highlight a few issues that we believe are of critical importance as you work to finalize the fiscal year 2020 budget. A particularly urgent need is for the addition of more three-year-old early education slots. Research shows that the earlier children begin high-quality education programs, the better their long-term outcomes. The very small number of three-year-old slots that currently exist mean that lower-income families who wish to have their children in a classroom setting have very few options. Additionally, many young children who qualify for early Head Start programs find that there is a gap in services due to the very small number of Head Start three-year-old slots. In order to ensure the best outcomes for these children, high-quality early education needs to be continuous. The Policy Council requests funding to add more three-year-old classes in high-need areas utilizing a blended funding model. Head Start is one of the original two-gen programs, meaning that comprehensive services are offered to the entire family. Wraparound services such as home visiting, medical and dental services, and parent support help to ensure success for children participating in these programs. Although our Policy Council includes both Head Start and Pre-K parents, the services offered to children in the two programs are not identical. The Policy Council strongly recommends strengthening these wraparound services for children who participate in MCPS Pre-K. All families can benefit from these services and there should be no distinction between children placed in Head Start classes and those placed in MCPS Pre-K classes. Lastly, the Policy Council, along with the Unity Action Board, has been tracking the progress of the Curb and Commission. We support the recommendation to expand Pre-K to all three- and four-year-olds. As Pre-K programs expand, though, the Policy Council emphasizes the need for sufficient administrative support to these programs to ensure adequate oversight and support. Due to capacity issues and the need for more options for families, we also recognize the need for a mixed delivery system that includes public and private providers. Such a system will require additional support and funding for private providers who may need assistance with training, meaning Excel's requirements and other certifications. Thank you for your commitment to the county's young children and their families. We hope that these policies will continue in the years to come and the Policy Council looks forward to working with the council to support these efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Wanda Bautista?
Good evening. My name is Wanda Bautista and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about the 2020 fiscal year operating budget. U.N. Secretary-General Kofi Annan once said that "Education is the premise of progress in every society, in every family." For families who immigrate to the United States, that goes without saying. After all, my mother left her native Dominican Republic when I was just four months old to be able to provide my sisters and I a better education and professional opportunities. It is because of her sacrifice that I can proudly say that I received a full ride and I graduated from Georgetown University, and it is also why I am honored to speak to you today from the perspective of a board member of identity. Identity works with thousands of at-risk Latino and other vulnerable youth who live in high-poverty areas of Montgomery County to ensure that they have the support that they need to obtain an education and better professional opportunities and succeed to one day become productive members of our county. This is a demographic that is the fastest-growing in our county. They exceed a third of the entire student population. They are also a demographic that is bearing the burden of a new and truly unimaginable level of trauma, anxiety, and fear of family separation and job loss. It is for this reason that I stand before you today and ask you to maintain funding for intensive family case management that helps stabilize more than 550 young people and their families. Maintain funding for 250 high-risk youth to participate in our saving lives through soccer and mentoring program. Help us maintain our capacity to provide bilingual mental health services to more than 150 children and their families who have been disproportionately affected by trauma and help us continue to reunify families that experience extremely high levels of intergenerational trauma as part of the county's effort to prevent gang violence. And include funding for a new program in workforce development that is preparing 20 young adult women for careers in early education and early care. Identity carries out this work and much more after school, in our community, and on playing fields to improve social and emotional well-being of these students and the academic and professional success that they one day can accomplish. It is a smart investment. With your past support and with the support of private foundations, local businesses, and hundreds of individuals, we've been able to accomplish a lot. They report real improvements in their ability to resolve conflict, to speak up for themselves. They avoid substance abuse and walk away and stay out of trouble. We understand that you are in a difficult position and have hard choices to make, but these programs are urgent and necessary. Please help us ensure the long-term health and prosperity of our Latino community and that of all residents of Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Craig Perry?
Good evening. My name is Craig Perry and I am a local small business owner for Shazan Music, a performing arts company. I would like to thank the council for hearing my testimony this evening. I am here today to ask the Montgomery County Council to support the Recreation Department in the upcoming budget. I am concerned that during this tough fiscal environment, the powerful work of the Recreation Department will be overlooked. Montgomery County Recreation has helped me to pursue my passion as an artist and business owner and allows me the opportunity to share my life's work with so many young people throughout the county. Arts programs offered through Recreation help young people to pursue passions, make connections, and build confidence they carry with them throughout life. The mastery that happens when a young person engages in one of my classes creates the motivation needed to overcome challenges and learn new skills. I've also had the opportunity to work with numerous young people throughout the county that have expressed a desire to pursue professional careers in arts as a result of the programs offered by the Recreation Department. In my experience, I've noticed that the exposure to these programs have given many of our youth hope and vision for their future in addition to long-lasting relationships with their peers and others that were able to participate in these programs. Additionally, through work and collaboration with Montgomery County Recreation, I am able to continue to pursue my life passion as a business owner and artist. I hope you strongly consider creating more opportunities for young people and their families through Recreation. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you so much. Carla Gorham? Jason Nuringer?
Good evening. My name is Jason Nuringer and I'm a resident of Rockville. I'm here before the council today to encourage our leaders to support and fund where appropriate an issue that impacts nearly every resident of Montgomery County, an issue with overwhelming support across all political groups and social groups. In a county where one cannot even get a consensus of whether it is sunny outside, an idea that as such overwhelming agreement must be acted on. I'm talking about widening I-270 and building a second Potomac Crossing connecting Montgomery County and Loudoun County. I can sit here and cite statistic after statistic about how our area is ranked as literally the worst traffic metropolitan traffic area in the nation, or occasionally second worst. Think about that for a second. We are worse than LA, we are worse than New York, and we're worse than Chicago, each with metropolitan areas multiple times the size of ours. I can cite statistic after statistic about how much time and money is lost due to traffic, but these statistics are not new and they keep falling on deaf ears to a council that just does not act. So I'm here to plead to you on behalf of the million-plus residents of Montgomery County. Widening I-270 and building a second Potomac Crossing can be done. It can be done with minimal and in some cases, no impact to the nearby environment. It can be done in coordination with other municipalities which have already expressed support. It can be done and it should be done. The economic benefit to the region would be enormous, particularly for Montgomery County, opening up a new corridor for businesses to operate. It offers infrastructure resiliency. Remember the tanker crash two weeks ago? Well, what if that lasted days or weeks? Or what if the bridge collapsed? Think about that. And best of all, it brings happier residents who can spend more time with their families, more time at their job, producing more and being more productive members of society than sitting in traffic. Whether this council likes it or not, cars are here to stay for a long time. There is no amount of bus, there is no amount of rail, and there is certainly no amount of biking that will take enough cars off the road to solve our traffic nightmare. So let's work here in the real world and work with the scenario laid before us by offering options for a car-dependent society. There is a loud but minority group of not-in-my-backyarders who will tell you that it cannot be done. They are wrong. They are a minority that has little to no interest in improving this county. Their objections are based on poor reasoning and from their argument is clear that they never even travel I-270 or the American Legion Bridge. My recommendation: start listening to the silent but overwhelming majority of residents in this county and build the bridge and widen I-270. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So with that, we are done with our public hearing and we'll do it tomorrow all over again at 7:00 P.M. Thank you so much. Drive safely.